Call this meeting to orders, January 6th, 2020. Roll call, smile.
Here.
Yeah. I'm working here. Okay. Number four, discussion of possible action regarding election of 2020 officer for board of county commissioners. One of you guys want to be chairman?
No, I think you're doing a good job. If John wants to do it, that's fine with me too.
I don't really want to. I believe that we... I gotta come up here today now.
Randy, continue on as chairman if that's good with him.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Supposed to vice chairman the same?
Right, we need to...
Is that?
Yep.
That's fine with me too. It doesn't work for you?
It don't matter.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Okay, so...
Chairman?
All in favor?
Yep.
All in favor? I'm saying aye.
Okay, number five, approval of minutes of the last meeting, December 3rd. And it was 2019.
I'll second that. Is these the minutes right here?
Yeah.
Hey, in the middle of the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye. Yep, okay. Bye.
Okay, number six, approve, disprove monthly reports for the following assessors office, county clerk court clerk health department, treasurer's office, and election board. Everybody's on there with sheriffs.
Right, and just, I just want to point out that the court clerk now also has her regular report and she also now has to do a records management and preservation report because of the new law of her being able to, you know, charge five dollars and all that. So that'll be included. I'll have another line when I put it in the minutes.
Oh.
Then we'll show her regular report.
Oh, plus her.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah, and on it, for some reason, her report doesn't have, will you all sign? You want me to stamp it?
Yeah, you might.
Okay. Because it's just for us.
But is it not on the agenda of the day?
Yeah, it's included in these monthly reports.
Okay.
As a, under her court clerk.
Okay.
But I just wanted to point out.
It's just a little extra stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, you're not gonna have to have another agenda item.
No.
Okay, that's good. I mean, that's fine.
Yeah. But I thought, well, I pointed out that we need to know whether there's something.
What? John, David.
Okay.
John?
Okay.
Thank you.
This last?
Yeah, these appropriate.
Oh, two. I wanted to make sure I told you about that while we were listening.
Okay, number seven, discussion possible action regarding monthly appropriations. Got it. Motion to approve them.
We need to shot that potato.
Did we miss one?
Yep.
Power is up.
Not good. I'm at 116. 160.
Oh, it's a bin.
Yeah. It's what, 117 was the lowest up today, wasn't it, for a while?
118 or so, month or two back. Well, we've got a habit. Yeah, motion, that's a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Handout, whatever you want to call it. Think what they give is what it is. Maybe them Christmas sales will reflect it and all that driving and stuff that I done this Christmas shopping. Are we actually two months?
I can't tell you for sure.
About two and a half, I think it seems like. There's a lag here.
I, I never, I don't know if it's, is, you think it's that long? I figured it was a month for sure, but on that.
About a month and a half.
The gross production, they don't know for sure.
Right.
They...
And that probably varies too, on whether they shut wells in or...
Well, yeah, but I mean, I think they have six months. They can be six months behind on that gross production tax, but...
Or even...
But, but I think on most of these taxes that we get paid on, like the license plates, the...
Sales tax.
Well, the fuel, yeah, I think that's probably, I gotta think it's a month behind at least that those businesses turn in.
I think so.
And then the following, for, they turn in like for January, at the end of January, and it's probably first of March before it gets back to here.
Yeah.
Harriet?
That's, that don't reflect all the holidays yet though. Well, that's the start of December.
Well, see our...
Next one will probably reflect.
It's, this doesn't have any sales tax though, on it.
No, but all the traveling and all that gas and all that, that should have been the busiest.
Yes. On this degree.
Have to tell people you got to drive them. Even if they're just driving around their yard.
Yeah, if you drive them around, do care. Hurts the gas.
Well, these tough times are here. Lots of oil field people hit me up that, that are worried about their stuff.
Yeah, we needed to pick back up.
See where that guy's closing the Longdale Speedway down after he spent all that money on it. Actually, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, they spent lots and lots of dollars on it.
Lot of money on that thing. Wow.
But if they are coming, I, you know, I mean, I'm guessing that's what...
Probably, because, um, that seems like the first thing you have to do for your...
Boys.
Boys. Yeah.
I would say that would come before the kids at school close.
Yeah.
And NASCAR family. These kids pretty good crap down there though. I mean, I've never been to race. I've been by there when they were racing there. Lot, seemed like a lot of people anyway.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Number, A, discussion possible action regarding bids, number 181909, jail sandblasting.
Yeah, ready. Well, we received one bid, uh, from the sandblaster. He came in at $32,000 from sandblasting. It's from onsite mobile blasting. He's a gentleman that came up and did some testing for us and stuff. Only bid to receive. And I respectfully request that we accept that bid.
Does he, uh, make sure everything, environmentally, if there's any lead or...
Yes, he does.
He's a, turnkey, take care of it, there won't be anything cleanup, special cleanup.
That may be certain. If he does the wet, we may, uh, our intention for it, see if we could get some Bill Johnson inmates, some of the people help.
But this, this is supposed to be a firm bid though, right? For that cleanup and all.
Well, I just, in case there's some kind of asbestos cleanup, extra charge, there ain't gonna be nothing like that, is there?
Is that your understanding?
Yeah, that was my understanding is when he took, uh, when he did that little test patch for us, he was gonna take it, test it and everything.
And make sure it was all...
We didn't hear anything back from him and then he submitted us this bill, so I would assume that it's...
So it's supposed to be a turnkey job.
Yes, my understanding is.
Alright, okay. Okay, how, what is the plan on paint for?
Well, I would respectfully ask if it can help the building. We have potentially a couple of large expenses coming up this year. I would like to replace two of my RV vehicles. And move, it's a big replacement. We'd go down to our reserve recovery, about six reserves. Terry Swallows, one of them, Terry has came in a couple of weeks ago, expressed some interest in getting out. He had a hip replaced, but it's been released by his doctor. He thinks Terry would be an asset and will be an asset to us. He knows a lot of people. And we currently have Crown Dicks as our reserves.
Okay.
And of course, if you weren't aware, we moved pickups that are more suitable for our guns. Uh, so we would move two of our Crown, uh, I'm sorry, two of our pickups down to reserves.
And replace them.
With pickups and then surplus out our Crown Dicks. But I said, I respectfully request that possibly can I have a building?
Well, I'm not opposed. We just, I just, I haven't been, you know, hidden up.
And I apologize, uh, when we first had the meeting and we discussed this briefly, um, I didn't make that clear and that's my fault. But I was hoping we could do that. You know, it's probably a sixty-seven year old jail. As far as I know, and I've been here since ninety-four, definitely, we've done some painting, but we've never taken it, I mean, never taken it. It could be a quarter inch, I don't know.
Right, right. I, I got you.
And we don't know what we're gonna do.
Building may fall down and we take the pay off though.
Yeah, it's very real life. That maybe don't want anything.
And, and I'm not, I'm not opposed. I'm in favor, I'm, I'm good with it, but I got, I do, did, Keith, did you understand what I was talking about, about the paint deal? Get that?
And I think I agree.
So we don't have a big lag? If we can get those bids in on the painting, I mean, if they can come here and look when he's sandblasting, so they can give us a solid bid on that also?
Right.
And I, I think looking ahead, um, it's gonna help us with our inspections and stuff. If they come up and they see, uh, that it's well maintained and stuff, they're, they're less likely to begin and try, I think.
Look around.
Well, it should, if it shows we were trying to take an interest and take it, I mean, I, I would think, oh...
From the time we start this project to finish, what do you...
The painting?
Yeah, what do you think?
Quite honestly, we, I couldn't tell you because until he starts that process and we get some guys in that are interested in painting, we won't know what they're looking at.
But we have no inmates until that's done.
Would, I, my understanding is we're gonna have to use inmates in, helping to clean up, is that correct?
Right, we, we'll have, we'll take our current inmates off the coordinate with the judge and the courts and figure out where we can put the inmates we have and then get them back to court. But we can either use our inmates if they...
But we won't be able to house them while Jerry is processing.
Correct, and of course, I guess we're, uh, our inmate population is down. So it's not like we're gonna move fourteen, fifteen guys.
Well, my next question then, I guess, and it pertains to the painting deal. Once you get it sandblasted, it's bare up there, is there, is that gonna be a bad reflection if, between being bare and having inmates in there? Is there anything, an issue with that before it gets painted?
I, I don't believe so. I, if it's, if I'm not mistaken, we have a fairly new jail inspector, the head. And I think if he sees that, or I believe...
Progress and motion.
Yeah, we're, that, we're making this attempt and I'll explain to him that this is a sixty-seven year old jail and, and I don't think it's gonna be an issue. And that's something that Keith and I have discussed, um, so...
I mean, I really wouldn't think that it'd matter if there was no painting in there. I mean, I understand they gotta be out while you're sandblasting and I don't know about while you're painting, if they can do it in, in shifts.
I'm hoping they turn around.
I mean, you know, you wouldn't have to find another place, but...
And addressing that, moving them to other jails, in the past, we've done that on occasion for different reasons and we've utilized Rick Wallace out of Gotham County. And, uh, his name is Clay Sanders. And they've been very good. They, they've given to charge us, right, just down there as a courtesy, um, and so, uh...
When, when does this guy, was there any start date? Do you know?
I don't believe so. I think he's just waiting on us to get to him and...
I mean, is he backlogged or...
I think he's waiting on us to give him a start date.
Okay.
It didn't sound like, he's called me several times. Didn't sound like he's too backlogged.
Okay, that's what, I'm just curious. It doesn't matter. Well, I mean, I'm, I'm good with this, or you got, that's a form of motion?
Al, al, that's a motion, you good, John? Yeah, yeah, I like it.
All in favor?
Yeah.
So I guess you're ready to move forward.
Thank you. And then, kind of wanna raise, I'd just like to mention that Keith has really stepped up and, and I've had quite a few things going on in my personal life in the last six months and hasn't been here as much as I would like and I'm sure you'd like, so, uh, he's really stepped up and taking care of some of this, so...
Probably earning his money though.
He is, and, uh...
And I, I feel, I'm sorry for your loss.
Well, thank you. I just, uh, it's been kind of rough three months, but, uh, I think we're back on track though. I know there's some rumors out there that, that I'm not gonna run again, but...
I have stroke though. Yeah, there are all kinds of rumors out there.
I, I did, yeah. I really did though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a stroke, had a super nine.
Well, I did, but they, they set up, it's, uh, this is weekend.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a super nine.
Super nine, wow.
I had a mini stroke and, uh, my intention is to continue as long as people, what's gonna happen?
Okay.
Well, thank you, John.
Thank you guys. Take care, Larry.
You too, thank you very much.
Okay, number nine, special possible action regarding EMPG this year, 2020, first quarterly report. This is just copy of the 2020 first quarterly report that needs to be submitted to OEM. For reimbursing $5,000 to that grant holder. That's just, that's that yearly deal.
That's the yearly grant that we did.
Okay. Did you get $5,000 quarterly?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to gather, so... Okay. Sounds good.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Alright.
You got any rumors about you? We have a...
Just, I was working on repeater this weekend.
Do we need standards? Do we need standards?
Yeah. Yeah, we had the, that building that we're moving, well, we moved the temporary building up there to the east, there at CD. Yeah, we had to move the temporary building up there and move the repeater into it, so we can look at moving.
Have you got the building up there?
The temporary one, yeah. Yeah, we got one put together.
Okay, so you don't need that other one?
Uh, cause it, this one's smaller, we were able to just move it in there.
Okay.
And it's not gonna take up a whole lot of space.
Okay.
And then we had to, had to go in where the, it had two air conditioning units in the back of it and we pulled out that one and we pulled out the old one that wasn't used, it's like twenty, thirty years old. That whole wall was rotted out because it was, wasn't sealed very well.
Stew it back in there?
What's that? So we had to, so I went back in and reframed it back out and sealed it back up, so...
Does that get you, your repeater out of there where you can get it down there and...
Yeah, we, uh, we ran, I ran a plug-in, separate plug-in out of there, break the box out there on the, next to the meter. So we put in additional circuit and have it simple run to power that repeater, so...
But you haven't moved that other building down there yet, have you?
No.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so, but that's the one that moves down to let you...
Yeah, you gotta get this one shut down so we can take it down to there.
Yeah, it's, it looks...
So the repeater is moved out of the building.
Okay.
That's gonna get moved.
Okay.
We just, I just need to go in and disconnect the electric.
Well, this, this, well, we're getting a new one. What, what's the status on the...
East.
The...
Still waiting on the repeaters and the deep lecture to come.
Okay.
So hopefully in the next week or two, they should have that equipment in and then it'll just be a matter of, of scheduling their tower, their job.
Are we essentially, these are, the one down there that you're moving this building to and the one out east, they're gonna be conjunction, are they gonna down south beach or are we gonna have a south repeater, an east repeater, and a west repeater? There'll be a east, west, and south.
Okay.
So it'll essentially be the same as what the east and west are. They both, if you're on that, the repeaters all transmit the same, so you can, on those channels, you can hear them, but they're all independent. So you basically, you will select which channel.
You'll hear them, but if they wanna talk on a sound repeater, they gotta...
Yeah, you're gonna select which repeater you transmit off, based on your location. Okay, but what, what I'm getting at, like in our, on our radios, are we gonna have to add another frequency?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what, yeah.
Or, or...
Or east, whichever, east.
They'll both, this will change and that will change, right?
No, the east will stay the same.
That'll be the same and that'll be the move.
And as we, as we go on and work on reprogramming, I've already started to add.
South.
Yeah, we already know, it'll be the same frequency, different tones.
Oh.
We started adding that, but we'll have to get around definitely to the, to your setup stuff and get the rest of that stuff updated. Okay, that's, that's why I was curious if we had to add that or... Yeah, it's not a big deal, it's just a matter of...
That ought to give us super coverage throughout the county then.
From what they've given us, you know, as far as projected covered maps that they've run in, that they've got a system that does that, faces geography and all that stuff.
It should give us coverage.
Totally, totally.
And then extending out, so...
It's just been a longer getting there.
Okay.
That was, that means it'll be, it'll be a, when you get, when you get woke up, so...
Yep.
Hopefully.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number 10, discussion possible action regarding inventory resolutions and removal cap on forty-eight grader ID number 307153 from District Two inventory. It was sold at bid and the auction online for $52,290 after the commission. I'll make that motion that's, that was well seconded.
Alright.
Thank you.
Bye.
Just had to get it off in the tree, yeah.
It's gone, been taken.
There it is. Can we take it here again?
Okay, number 11, discussion possible action regarding changes to the requisitioning and receiving officer for the health department fund. Requisitioning Patty Steelman and Nancy Lanley and receiving Dawn McMurtry and Alecia Giller.
And then, oh, gone.
I'll make the motion we do so. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Put some quit and we got new ones. Is that what it is?
Just, uh...
And I've got two pages to sign.
Had three left. Two or three left over there, I think.
And we've already taken them off.
Yeah, this is, this, yeah, this is...
Patty's the only one I know, it's over there now. I don't love the other girls.
Number 12, discussion possible action regarding establishing a new fund named Reed Grant Fund 1425, apartment 6200.
And that's when we can move money over there. We've gotta open up an account.
This will be for the, the soil conservation group that got awarded the $50,000 part grant. So, it's a, a motion to...
I'll make the motion we do so. Put that out there too, because basically...
We have to put it in an account and then they have to go by and we, and...
And we pay it and then they reimburse us at the end, they'll reimburse us.
It's been...
Red tape.
Quite a little ordeal. Oh, I know. Getting, getting past the, getting to how the auditors want it.
Yeah.
Like I said.
I didn't think I got a second, did I get a second? Yeah. John. Got you.
Number 13, discussion possible action regarding the OSA and I Form 240 for the temporary transfer from the general government sales tax fund to the Reed Grant Fund and about $50,000. And this is for that purpose. We just handled for the Reed Grant Fund. To move.
Okay.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
These X's up here, what?
Yeah, keep, sign both of those and then three in there.
I think I've asked this before, John, did they, did they say when the money is actually gonna be awarded?
Um, yeah. I wanna say April, but I might be wrong.
Okay, well, I just, I wasn't sure. I know there's...
They're having a general board meeting, um, maybe that guy from Freedom, Thad or Shad? Shad? I think he's probably, that'll be his meeting he needs to go to this month. I don't have an executive board this month, but they do have a general board, all the general...
Well, aren't you on the general too?
No, I'm on the, I'm, I'm just on the executive.
Oh, that's the only time you go? Oh, okay, I thought it was one, both.
No, I don't go to everyone. I used to be on the general board.
Okay.
But not, not now.
Okay.
It's, uh...
Well, I just, I was...
It's generally every month too, our executive board and the, and the, the general board is quarterly and the executive board is monthly.
Okay.
And it's, it's quarter time for them. But next month, I'll go back.
Number 14, acknowledgement to the board regarding election board registration report.
Yeah, this is a yearly thing and I marked, I'm sorry, because you guys aren't supposed to, it's just to acknowledge me, you don't have to...
Just shows who?
Yeah, it shows how many Republicans and Democrats and...
That Jennifer Fitzgerald or something like that, do you have her? She could probably let you hold in.
Yeah, she's, she's really good, yeah.
I was just being curious when they, when they could get their...
I, they said, but I, I don't remember.
After 2,800 Republicans.
She owed you that?
The independents keep growing, don't they?
Yeah, I think she's in there.
Well, the Republicans is 2,800.
When I ran, there was 450 independents.
Oh, well, then they're going down. It's 387 now.
When I ran, there was 450.
Okay. I mean, this is, we can look at it anytime, I just wanted, I was just, if Marion, or if she wanted to see it.
Is that our, what our census?
Can I make you come?
No, it's, it come from the election board, just telling us what, what the numbers are for 2020. Like inactive, I don't know what that inactive means, that if they just haven't voted in so long or...
They're registered voters, they haven't voted.
Then after a while, won't they?
I thought they were supposed to be dropped there, yeah.
No, not unless the, uh, they request to be dropped or they die or they, uh...
I, I...
About three things.
I think, I'm, I remember, I, I think you're right, that after so many elections that they don't vote, they're supposed to take their name off of the...
They have to tell them where they...
The deal and they're supposed to re-recture. I think, I think lack of voting because, because they don't know, the election board doesn't know whether you're still here or not or, or what have you. I mean...
Census, that's what takes care of that.
The what, the census is?
Census.
Yeah.
How many Democrats were there?
Eight hundred and seventy-four, 135 inactive. So I guess that makes the total is 1,009 and Republicans is 3,099. It's still right at two thirds and a third.
Wonder what the state is.
I don't know. I don't know, I think it's, that flip-flops east of I thirty-five, Democrats and Republicans, I think it's, but I think the western part of the state is. It is largely Republican. Okay. Number fifteen, any new business, while we're looking at that?
I don't have any.
It's about what was, we don't, about three and one.
I don't have any new business, cold.
It is cold.
Still working on my building, doing the mudding and the drop sealing today.
Getting closer, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Wanna get that, that, have they got the heat going in there?
No. He'll come and after they do that drop sealing, to put the lights and the vents.
That work good.
Uh, they'll be next, they do the mudding and, and stuff today, and I don't know if they'll do the drop sealing. Ain't got too far to go, another couple of weeks maybe.
Have you had a heater going? Yet, is the old one, or did they take it out, or was it?
It's.
Had they just take the cooling unit out?
Uh, yeah, they took the cooling unit out, but the heat still comes into our office, and where we had our office, we put some French doors and, and, and you can open that up and it'll let heat flow out there, you know, and.
Okay, I was just curious, I didn't know that.
They've got their electrical boxes and all the electric done, but they haven't got it hooked up. And, and the vent stuff, and, they're getting closer.
Okay, number sixteen, prove, disprove, blanket, personal.
I'll do that, I'll second.
And I'll vote aye. How's that? And number seventeen, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that too.
I'll second. Guess we're done.